I'll meet an order and ask the Councilman Poole to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Everyone stand and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the room.
Okay, we have an invocation, shall we carry that over? Mr. Watson isn't here, all right. Councilman Poole?
Here.
Councilman Cotton?
Here.
Councilman Littles?
Present.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Mayor Lovins?
Here.
Forum is present.
An approval of the minutes from the last meeting.
I motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Little, seconded by Councilman Cotton, any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Littles?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, minutes are approved.
I'd like to welcome our visitors here today. I see several people I haven't seen here before, and some people who just returned from a long trip, and glad to see y'all made it safe and sound. Brutal of the agenda.
Agenda is shown on the wall for the audience, and the council has a copy of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions at this time? Hearing none, all in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, agenda is approved as presented. This is not the clearest picture, but Low Country Adventures, who currently has a lease with the city for their kayaking and boating business, has come. Currently, they have a lease area which allows them to operate in this vicinity. This is the pavilion in abandoned park. This is South Street coming in, and the water's over here somewhere. What they're requesting is an amendment to the lease which would extend that area out to include that pavilion where they can use it as an assembly area for their kayaking and boating, and also as a safe house if need be. And I recommend that the lease be approved. We have all the documentation in our hands necessary.
I make a motion to approve. I second.
I have a motion by Councilman Cotton, seconded by Councilman Littles, any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Littles?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, lease will be signed.
I'd like to call on Brooke Giff.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm here on behalf of the Bruton Development Authority. Suzanne Anderson is here on behalf of Georgia Pacific. We have negotiated a lease with Georgia Pacific. The city of Bruton is also, the mayor's been involved in some of those discussions. We are proposing to lease the spec building and the surrounding land, which is the larger red area to Georgia Pacific, the two areas, smaller tracts below the spec building are actually owned by the city. So roughly half of the land is owned by the city, the other half is owned by the Bruton Development Authority. These are all within the confines of the industrial park. There are certain restrictions that apply to use of the property in the industrial park. Georgia Pacific would like to use this area as part of its storage for the construction that they anticipate occurring. That actual use is prohibited by the industrial park covenants, and we're asking and recommending on behalf of the Bruton Development Authority that those restrictions be waived during the term of the lease, which is a two-year lease, or any extension of that lease. The lease actually, I think it's a win-win for, certainly for the Bruton Development Authority and the city, and for Georgia Pacific. The lease is going to be for $5,000 during the lease term for the city and for Bruton Development Authority. And there's also going to be a fence constructed around the confines of the industrial, the spec building and the property that it sits on. They're going to do improvements to the site, going to grade the property, put gravel out, and also pour concrete floor in the spec building. Y'all probably know we've been struggling to some extent about what to do with that spec building, trying to market it and sell it. I think this will be a real plus for us in that effort. So we're asking you to approve this resolution and to approve the lease for the city, and if y'all approve it, then the Bruton Development Authority is going to sign their lease as well. But you've got to do this resolution first before we can do that. I know Councilman Little and Councilman Barton were at our meeting, and I think they have a full understanding, I hope, of what we're doing, and we appreciate y'all coming to our meeting and your input that you had at that meeting. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'd like to add that George S. has also agreed that if, at the end of the lease, if we want any of the fence or the gravel removed, that they'll be happy to do that. We'll probably end up wanting to keep it all, but they have agreed that we don't want it, that they'll remove it.
Correct. Thank you for correcting me on that. And I have the proposed lease.
I make a motion to approve the resolution 14-07-28.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Barton, seconded by Councilman Littles, any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Littles?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, and the resolution and leases are approved.
You can leave now, Suzanne, you don't have to stay here the night.
No, I'm saying, I didn't believe you could see our, our government work, I'm watching that.
Tom, Steve, you have it.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. July the 7th, our planning commission met to consider a request by Kelly Properties to rezonate a parcel of property on Foshee Road that is just within the city limits of Bruton. The parcel of property currently is RA, that is rural, residential, and agricultural, and their petition to the planning commission was to rezonate to R5. R5 would have been Mobile Home Park. During the course of discussion from the planning commission meeting, there was a compromise reached, an agreement between parties present and the planning commission, that rather than to rezonate that parcel, R5, which would allow for a Mobile Home Park and an RV Park, that it would be rezoned B3. B3 would be general business. B3 would allow for an RV Park, but would never allow for a Mobile Home Park. That did seem to appease and satisfy those in opposition. While all in opposition were not satisfied, it did appease and satisfy many of them. So the request is that we would set up here a public hearing. The public hearing date would be set for August the 25th, and at that time, all those in favor of or in opposition to this could come before you, and they could say their piece for or against, and then it would be up to the council to decide what to do with it. So the planning commission recommends that this parcel of property be rezoned to a B3, and requests that you set up a public hearing to hear that. The earliest date that could satisfy our publication requirements would be the meeting to be held on August the 25th.
The council knows, but just to make it public record, I have to abstain from voting on this. I have a conflict, and I serve on a bank board with Mr. Kelly, so, but you need a motion, right?
Okay. Now, where the rezoning was concerned also, there was the agreement not only to do B3 so that it could only be an RV Park and could never be a Mobile Home Park, although the B3 would allow future business to be there. Cravers on the corner is B3, so it's not totally unprecedented there, and an RA parcel is eligible to be rezoned to any desired parcel that the planning commission would recommend. There was also the agreement to put up an eight-foot-high privacy fence bordering Foshee Road with appropriate landscaping to serve as a buffer. But the request right now is simply to set up a public hearing for August the 25th so the council can hear this request and decide what to do with it.
I make a motion for a public hearing on the 25th.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Cotton, seconded by Councilman Barton for the public hearing. Any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Littles?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, and a public hearing will be scheduled.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Next item is approval of purchase of lots 33 and 34 of Alexander Heights. I'll ask Ray Madsen to claim that.
Mayor and council, I've come for you today to ask y'all to give us permission to buy these two lots up in West Alexander. We've got all the plans and stuff to do, the sewer up there, to put the sewer in, and all we're waiting on right now. It's been really a hard time trying to get to this point. And finally, I got Mr. Ward to agree to sell these two, he won't sell one of them, he sells me both of them. And so, but anyway, so we got to get an appraisal on it, talk to Mr. Hines about that, and appraisal will come back at 29.5, and that's why he's asking for the property, that's what they give for it. They've owned it for approximately five or six years, and I'm asking the council to give us permission to go ahead and proceed by buying these two lots so we can go ahead and proceed with the sewer, which I think we'll be able to start bidding it maybe within a couple of months.
This will be coming out of the gas fund?
No, this will be coming out of the bond money.
Okay.
It's 29.5 for both marshals?
That's correct.
Both?
Yes, sir.
What's that?
One of them's 140, well, you can see it there, one of them's 142 foot by 199, and then the other one's 125 by 5. And that's actually the one right there is where actually we'll be putting the station at. It crosses that cupboard in there that we just replaced a couple of months ago, you know, on South Brooks Boulevard. We're gonna go in there and, you know, we had to have a meeting up there with all the residents, and they agreed for us to put this pump station in this area up there as long as we hid it, you know, and so we're gonna try to put it in the backside back there, trying to get it out of the way and get it hid, you know, and we're gonna put a big board fence up around it. But we will have to have another hearing, another meeting with them once we do this here before we actually put it in, to make sure to the community that's exactly where they want to put it.
Ray, let me ask a question. In the audience out there, we have a couple of residents that live in West Alexander.
This is West Alexander?
I mean, uh...
East Alexander?
Yeah, I'm confused, I'm sorry.
Okay.
This station, if this goes through, would be sufficient to handle the sewage from both those Alexander areas, is that correct, or is this only gonna...
No, it's gonna handle, what it'll do, it'll actually handle everything in West Alexander, then half of everything that's in East Alexander, and we're gonna turn it back around on the top of that big hill in there. Didn't we be 40-foot deep going through that hill in there to get gravity sewer in there to serve them homes? I think there's about nine or 10 homes on the other side in there. And we're gonna put a small pump station over there, which is a very small pump station. This other one down here is gonna have 40 horsepower motors in it, the one that we're gonna put over on the other side over there, and we've already got, Jackson Hines has already agreed to let us put it on his property, right there by the golf course, and then we're gonna take the forest manes, and the forest manes are gonna come through the golf course, come around right in there behind Mr. McMillan's pond, and then we're gonna parallel the golf course property line all the way out to, right at the bank of Bruton, and tie it into the manhole there, right behind the tennis court. And that's how, you know, that's the way we got it designed.
I make a motion to approve the, to purchase the two lots.
I second. I have a motion by Councilman Cotton, seconded by Councilman Poole, any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Littles?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Right, direct.
Thank you, Baron Council.
We have a vacancy that's come up on the planning commission, and that's a mayoral appointment, correct? And I just want to reappoint Sandy Hardy for another term. Do we have any announcements?
Do you have any announcements? We have three comments. The first one will be by Margot Adams on behalf of the T.R. Miller Band Boosters.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I would like to give each one of you a packet to look at while...
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
As you know, T.R. Miller High School Band hosts Dixieland Marching Festival every year, and this year our date is September 27th. Well, with the construction going on at the high school, we've had a problem. We moved bus parking last year, and it sort of messed up where our practice fields are, where our bus parking goes. And bus parking for the high schools that are coming in to participate is very important because they're staying in Bruton, they're coming in, they're bringing business, they bring people with them, but the safety of the students is our foremost priority. If you'll take a look at your large map that looks like this, it shows the front of the school with the drive, it's sort of a triangular shape, and it shows part of the football field. What we propose to do, and what we would like permission to do, is to block off Tiger Drive from where I have that black X where you could turn into Farmer's Furniture, right there in front of Farmer's Furniture, you'd still be able to turn into that shopping center there, and then block it off at the four-way stop by the YMCA toward Belleville Avenue. The reason being, we want to park those buses behind Farmer's Furniture in that parking area that's reserved parking during football games, and that way our students can safely cross when they come across to go to the practice field, or they come in to bring equipment, or whatever we need to do. We had parents there last year, and we had a problem with people speeding through. During the day, it wasn't quite so bad, but during the night, you know, as it got later and it got darker, it was really a dangerous situation. So we're asking...
This is all they do?
This would be from 1 o'clock in the afternoon, we'd block it off at 1, until about 8:30 or 9 o'clock that night. And it would be from that four-way stop at Belleville Avenue onto Tiger Drive, just down to, right there where the tennis courts are, by Farmer's Furniture, just blocking off that section of Tiger Drive so that we could bring students safely across because they come down between the football field and the baseball field to get to the practice areas.
I think, you know, when you talk about blocking off streets, you need to probably go through the Bruton PD Police Department first so they can evaluate the safety of it and give you better directions of exactly how it need to be done. So I think, I don't know if we need to say, do that before the council vote on it or not.
Another thing we could do, you know, we just start, again, blocking streets, especially a through street like that, you might really want to talk to Chief McGee, and maybe we could put policemen there. I know that's a pretty good long time, but if I didn't know about this street being blocked, and I gotta drive all the way around the block, and there's a bunch of people, I might be not as happy about it.
We could put announcements in the paper, I will talk to Chief McGee.
It may be better to have a policeman there than it is to have, you know, parents and such.
Right, well, we had talked to him before, and the cost of putting policemen because we have to pay for them, then it eats up our budget that we have, you know? And Dixieland is our biggest fundraiser that the band does every year.
Once you get with him, and then, and then maybe he can come up with a dollar figure to present back to the council.
Okay.
Okay?
I will.
And that might aside your problem.
Thank you. All right, the second thing that I would like for y'all to take under consideration and discuss, and then you can get back to us, and we've talked to Mr. Smith, we've talked to Mary Bell, we've talked to Chief Salter. The band is doing an Elvis show this year, and in the past, they have shot fireworks. When we shot fireworks before the field where the practice field is and the new track was, there was nothing there, and that's where they were shot from. We have one shell that we want to shoot, it would be a Class C, that you could buy yourself. It's not a professional type, it wouldn't shoot, but maybe 80 feet up, as long as it goes above the scoreboard. But I circled on the small map under the schedule of when we would shoot fireworks in red, where the long jump pit is. We have a box that's built up, that's heavy and weighted, that's 12 by 12 square, that stands about three feet high, has a piece of metal hammered to the top of it. We would glue, with epoxy glue, the bottom of the shell holder, which is a tube with a wooden base, would glue that to that shell. We would have two adults back there, one with a fire extinguisher, and one that would actually set it off, and at a certain part in the show, then it would be lit and go off, and it would just be that one shell, it would only be for home games. But we did ask that we have a trial run on the Thursday night before. We were told that we needed to come before y'all because that would be a council matter for approval of being able to shoot off a firework, any significant, if it's too dry, and Chief Salter calls me and says, "It's too dry for you to shoot, we won't."
Well, there's an ordinance against the fireworks anyway, that's why you're requesting a waiver, or an order.
Right. So it would be just in that one, it would be one shell, only at home games, and we wanted you to take that into consideration too, if that would be, if that would be a possibility for us to do, because it would add so much to the show.
I have to sort of laugh at how simple things get complicated.
Yeah.
You know, I start to think about shooting fireworks off, and I assume that the band boosters don't care any insurance for that kind of stuff.
We can if we need to.
You can furnish fireworks, cover for fireworks?
If, I'm sure we can, we will find somebody that will cover us if we need a liability.
Well, that's what somebody's expensive, but, I mean, the council might have to vote. I don't have a problem with it as long as Chief Salter sort of is consulted before each game, and he's good with it, and, Chief, what do you think about shooting fireworks off in a public place like that?
They called me last week asking me about it, I knew we had an ordinance, so I told them they'd have to come. I talked to the Fire Marshal today and just to see what the stipulations was on shooting fireworks at a public event, and there is some stipulations on it. Even though it is a Class C or common firework, even if you shoot one or you shoot 20, there has to be a 600-foot radius, is what they told me, said it was state law, 600-foot radius from any school building, any of the fans in the stands, and any public roadway is what he told me, and I have a copy of Alabama law, but it's depending on what they're shooting. I don't really know exactly what they're, what they want to shoot, we'd have to look and see. It really depends on the size of the ordinance, is it a four-inch shell, is it a little two-inch shell, and that's going to depend on the radius that it has to be, but we just have to see what they're, what they're wanting to shoot, and once I figure that out, I can go back to the Fire Marshal and tell them, "This is what it is, you know, can we reduce the radius to 300-foot?" Because 600-foot radius where they would have to put it from any roadway, when they fired it off, nobody would be able to see it, so we just have to see what they're, what they're trying to do, or what kind of fire were they trying to use, so, and I don't know what they're trying to use whatsoever, but...
We're willing to let Chief Salter go with us and say, "You could, maybe this is better," you know, we don't have a problem with that. And if it's denied, we understand, and that's not a problem either, we'll figure out something else to do, but it would just be something big to add right there at the end of the show.
I think with Class C...
The council wanted to vote on that and give Chief Salter the authority to make that final decision, actually knows all the specs and the law and so forth, could we do that?
Well, yeah, we may pass the subject to his ultimate approval.
Right.
I think you could do that, but I think you do have to declare with the State Fire Marshal when you shoot what's called proximal, audience. They may even permit that you have to give to the state, but that's all controlled by the state, and I think the city can, under fireworks law, they can restrict it more than the state law, but I don't think they can expand it so really, whatever approval that y'all want to give, a blessing to it, you can do it subject to whatever works out with the Fire Marshal, but...
Okay. See what I mean by something simple gets complicated? So we, if we want to do it, we need a motion to approve the request for the waiver subject to Chief Salter, making sure he agrees to comply.
I'll promote it through the State Fire Marshal.
Right.
They can refer to it like that, if that's...
Okay.
I make a motion to approve under the chief's guideline.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Barton, seconded by Councilman Cotton, any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Littles?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Second comment will be by Dr. Rosemary Watkins on behalf of Southern Normal.
Good afternoon. I come on behalf of Alabama State University. We are preparing a community needs forum, and we wanted to personally invite the mayor and the council and the community to come out for this event. It's gonna be held in this room on Wednesday, July 30th, at 5:00 P.M. I do have the announcements, if I may give those to you. Alabama State University, as many of you know, has a new president, and she has authorized the provost to continue operations of Alabama State University at the Southern Normal site, and also to begin to expand on our academic offerings. The provost will be here himself, he is the number-two person, I guess you would call it, at the university, to entertain the needs of the community, and also Dr. Charles Smith will be with him to talk about the extended and online programs division that has just been established and will incorporate Alabama State University Southern Normal as a part of it. I would continue in my role directing the site, but they will be the senior administrators who will be assisting the president in this vision. What we would like to see is the community come out and show support for Alabama State's efforts in this community, and also to let us know what your needs are, what you see us as working with in terms of economic development and from an academic standpoint, in terms of any professional development. Of course, you know, we do the professional development for educators, and the university is committing its graduate-level programs where we will be offering the graduate education degrees in full, either online or here in Bruton without having to go to the Montgomery Campus, and we are continuing our accelerated undergraduate degree completion in psychology, which allows a person with community college courses to complete their degree in psychology in one year in an accelerated fashion. So the senior leadership will be here, as I said, on Wednesday to discuss the opportunities. The Alabama State will be expanding here, and also with a listening ear, to be able to hear from the community those avenues that, because we are the Southern Normal campus, we expand into outreach greater than what the university does itself, so there are other... are other economic development opportunities. Of course, you know, we do our symposium and what have you, but we'd like to move into more training aspect and those types of programs that would benefit the community outside of having the bachelor or master degree. There are long-term plans, at my understanding, of even having doctoral courses offered here. So I'm excited about it, and I hope that the community will rally behind us and offer Alabama State the support and help us get the word out as well.
Thank you, Senator. Unfortunately, I'll be out of town, me and Steve, but I hope you have a large turnout. Southern Normal, Alabama State are a great, a great asset of Bruton, and I hope a lot of people come and give their thoughts.
And if someone can't come, if you'll send a representative to bring your ideas, we'd appreciate having that as well, and to convey to them in your absence that you do support our presence.
Correct.
Thank you.
Last comment is from Mr. Bill McKee.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. Before I get started, I'll give you a printout, give you an idea of what we're going through, what we're asking for. I got the name. On behalf of the Southern Normal Alumni Association, we're requesting permission to have a parade on the twentieth of September, beginning at eleven hundred hours, Saturday the twentieth, and we want to get your permission that we can carry out this event. I've given you a copy of this so you can understand what is going on and get a total picture. One thing that's perturbing to some of the people that I've had calls from, we don't have quality places for them to stay in Bruton, and that hurts us. We're trying to bring money to the city, and yet the hospitality places are not up to par. And we got this by taking survey of people who have been there, and they say, "No, no, no, no." So we didn't recommend anybody here in Bruton, okay? But we're concerned primarily for a parade, and that's what we're requesting from you.
You, y'all have had this parade?
Hmm?
You've had this parade several?
We had it two thousand and eleven.
And I assume you'll coordinate that with the police department, so...
Well, I have that already made out. As soon as you approve, I go to the city chief. I got the water board approved to use the facility to summon the parade also.
I make a motion to approve.
I second. I have a motion by Councilman Barton, second by Councilman Little. Any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Little?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll, we'll need to see your application, so...
I can give it to you right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No more comments.
I post with adjourned.